On Tuesday, the 16th of September 2025, time is six o'clock. Apologies for absence.
Apologies have been received from councillors Jefferson, McDonald and Sturridge.
Okay, thank you. 16125 declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests. Moving on to minutes of the Heritage Events Committee. This is to receive and confirm the minutes of the Heritage and Events Committee meeting held on the 15th of July 2025 as the true record. It's signed by the committee chair. Do we all agree? The minutes of the last meeting? Item 16325, report on the activities of the Heritage Events Team since the last meeting. And this is to receive a report on the activities of the Heritage Event Team since the last meeting. This is just to note the report, so. Alan and.
Me?
You.
Obviously, this report got circulated beforehand, we have our regular hires. And our regular hires are slowly kind of dropping away because we increased our charges for the first time in six years. We, no one needs to pay to come to work, and I think we were in that particular situation. We've had a number of other third-party events. And we obviously had our summer programme, which we did, which is here, the Lego, the brickologists, the mayor's scientists. And then we did the Bird Box building as part of the BFR wider programme. In terms of the order book, our order book is looking healthy. It's around about the 11,340 pound mark. Sometimes it goes as low as nine thousand pounds and sometimes as high as 12,000. So that's not too bad. But what is encouraging is our high income in July increased to 4,776. Whereas the average for the year so far has been 2,421. So that's actually quite a significant increase and quite pleasing. And I think part of what we've been trying to do, put a focus on pricing and making sure that we do that. The civic event events, the committee and the staff within the Civic and Events Officer put together the VJ 80 Day on the 15th of August. I think it was, I attended for a short while and I was quite happy. The day itself, there were three components to it. The first component was a flag raising event in the marketplace, which we did. The second event, there was the ceremony at the fee power tree. We had no involvement with that, we had no civic presence to that. And then the third component was the small-scale celebration on the marketplace, which obviously the Heritage and Events Officer put together, supported by mainly the town team, and there was a whole lot of fun and games and very well-attended. I think it was a family-oriented event. And I haven't seen, I don't post on social media, but I do follow social media. There was actually a lot of positivity that came out of that event, no negative comments. We had this data vital report, which was last week. We've had the Battle of Britain commemoration, which was on Sunday. And then our next big civic event is the Heritage, is the Remembrance Sunday on the 9th of November. And we've included some more information in a separate agenda item in this meeting. In terms of personnel, this committee has been wrecked by changes in personnel this year, this calendar year, and they have continued. The new Heritage and Events Manager has decided to leave the council. So that's, he'll be leaving at the end of this month. We have appointed the CEO of Heritage and Events Officer as the acting Heritage and Events Manager. That will be an interesting position, that's a six-month contract. And then when the Carnegie Guildhall charity comes to fruition, the staff will be, structure will be finalized at that particular day. We saw very dependent on our sessional staffing model, and that is, comes with its challenges. Because as you'll see when we get to the last item in the agenda, the below-the-line item, the difference in the cost of a council-paid employee versus the difference in the cost of a sessional staff employee is quite significant. It has a big impact. In terms of venue management, the temporary banking hub has been commissioned. It started last Thursday with a soft launch and it's been operating the last few days. Other than having some a little bit of unruly behaviour on Friday, when some children decided to ride their bicycles into the banking hub and up and down the corridor here. It's actually gone okay, but all the problems that they've had, we've been able to address. What I was very pleased about, just to strike my own ego, is that the banking hub have actually said they've never worked with a partner as responsive as we have. They say if they ask for something, normally they get it within, within three weeks and with dealing with us, they've got it typically within 24 hours. So I've asked them to confirm that in writing. So I can hang it up the bar. And then honestly, just the challenges, this committee and the staff and the Heritage and Events Team certainly do have significant challenges. We've started making a bit of progress on them. I think we didn't make enough progress as we could have and should have done. And, but I'm quite confident now that within the next six months, a lot of those challenges will be addressed. The pricing strategy that we're going to talk about next one in this meeting, below the line, second part, is just an indication of the type of work that we're doing and that will start coming out of the committee. And then, just as I was sitting here waiting for this meeting to start, I remember that we've also been doing the heritage part of our website. The council's should write as part of that, the town park was writing that. And we really want to improve that part of our website to kind of reinforce the heritage element that the town council has. So sorry for leaving that off the report, but if you could just note that as well.
Okay, any comments?
Just a question on the banking hub, how long are they going to be to use on six months higher or?
They're committed to a six-month hire from 17th of August to the 17th of March, I think.
So I'm just thinking about obviously wedding packages and that would do with the Guildhall. That does constrain a little to the ability to do the bigger.
Yeah, well, the only part of the building that's licensed this part, if they would actually do a ceremony, if they want to do reception, they can use a Carnegie. So what we are trying to do is we've spoken to people that have hired that we can use a temporary bar if need be in this part, if it's just a very small wedding. Otherwise, we will take the loss and provide the Carnegie as the reception venue at no extra charge. But the income we generate from the temporary banking hub offsets any, you know, theoretical opportunity costs that we would lose by doing that.
Okay.
Just on Heritage and Events, which is happening at the moment, thankfully we have got some kind of thing. I think we missed about a little this year in town coordination, I met with Dave and introduced him to the six. We've got some links there, which hopefully we can nurture for next year and bring other players into plan. Because I think we do need to try and, I know we're caught off guard with Katie leaving and Dave's been. But I think it's something we can just keep on the counter.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah. Right, okay, so we're happy to note, just to note that?
Yeah, my voice is cut off at the end of this meeting.
Okay, so 16425, calendar of future events. To receive and review the calendar of town council planned events as of the date of this agenda. To agree the events discussed and planned, so. Over to you again, Alan.
In terms of the budget for 2526, I've set that up, this was the approved budget. If you remember, we took a significant chunk of the budget that was allocated to, certainly to civic events, and we put it into the VE 80 Day. We left a great deal of money for the other events, I've highlighted it, yet those events have happened. We've got the mayor's carol concerts, which will be there through the year. We've got the mayor's Christmas lunch, which we budgeted for. The Battle of Britain has happened, I don't, you know, there's just a little bit of catering costs that come out of that. And then remember, it's the next, the next big event from a civic inheritance perspective. And then the town event, we've got the marketplace summer, we allocated 3,000 pounds, we didn't use 3,000 pounds. So we've got about 2,000 pounds to allocate to the Christmas light switch-on. And we've got money, the bar money that we generated at the VE 80 Day, we also will supplement the Christmas light switch-on. So we've got quite a decent budget for that particular function. The team, I can't give you too much details in terms of what we're doing on Christmas Day. But I know the team have really focused on doing something slightly different. Sorry, I'm just trying to find my way here. So remember Sunday, we can deal with that one in this meeting. The new calendar event, we proposed a Battle of the Bands. This is just a concept paper, I'll table it to the town clerk. This is just to, again, to add to the variety of events that we're offering at our Christmas light switch-on. We're trying to make the Christmas light switch-on a series of events rather than just a permanent space. So if you come along with your family, you will be entertained, there will be constant entertainment, constant engagement. And this is part of the concept of doing that, where we're going to have a competition in the Carnegie and get an under-18 band and an over-18 band to actually perform at the Christmas lights. We'll actually pay them to do that because we seriously should generate the income in selecting them. But this is just a concept idea, it has no financial implications. Myself and the town park will be in big trouble as there is, so that's going ahead. And that will be just be part of the greater Christmas lights switch-on. The programme, the actual programme itself is on the next page. These are the events that are left, they need to be reduced slightly. The opening day is happening at the moment. The Battle of Britain has happened, the Battle of the Bands, we've looked at the 2nd of November to do that. The Remembrance Sunday is there and then the Christmas light switch-on. And we have a presentation to the town clerk on next Monday, where we'll be putting together the programme for the Christmas light switch-on. And then we'll bring it to this committee for approval and sign-off before, at the next meeting. But that's the idea, is we're doing a lot of planning or looking at our marketing, looking at so many different things. But at the moment, these are the events that we've locked into the, to our calendar. I'll leave it there.
Okay, any comments?
Just one.
I was just wondering, is the Battle of the Bands already being publicised?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but it is happening.
We've just done a concept paper. What we will do is we'll take it to the town, the town clerk has to, we just have to do a little bit more work in terms of mitigating all the financial risks and the operational risk of it and making sure that it's credible. And we'll then do a marketing campaign.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we might not have very much time to get the battle.
Well, we, in the next week, we'll have it done. We've sold the concept in the town clerk, it's the detail that we have to sell to it now.
Okay, and where will it be in the Carnegie?
Be in the Carnegie.
Yeah, great.
I did sort of think that a lot of the youth bands are going to be, come from the academy. And so we're trying to do partnership with the academy and stuff like that. And there was separate stuff that's, I only know about it because my son does a lot of the sound.
Yeah, sounds really good.
Yeah.
They're using, they're using the academy because they've got a large number of bands. And we're also using the academy for the brass band for Armistice Day. So we are trying to connect with the schools and that's what we're doing.
So hopefully, as soon as the green light's given, there'll be lots of bands to battle.
Yes, what is envisaged. But then, well, my thing was, just today, I got a thing through from the executive head at Drake, who I do engagement work with. And she's, when I first met her, we talked about a plan that was in place for previous Christmases for the lantern parade. A proper lantern parade, not a lantern that goes on in the dark while you're coming in the light. That was a bit ill-fought-out, I think, last time, I've typically found. There is a cost implication, so I'm going to have to investigate ways that we can get that cost maybe covered elsewhere. It's something I'm going to be looking at over the next couple of weeks. And I will present it to you in the clerk when I've got a little bit more meat on the bone. My fear is it's not going to happen this year because there is a cost implication.
Right.
But we'll have a look and see if we can get that, maybe from donations, maybe from the town board or whatever, I don't know. I can't promise money from there because there's 20 people around the table offering, they want, they want, they want, and it's not a lot of money. So it's, at the moment is, I've just had the thing today, I'm not had a chance to look at it properly. But I will present it to prior to the next meeting. And if we can do it and we can get the money to do it, I think it'd be a nice thing to use, the purpose is to use all of the schools in the town.
That would be good.
But by using all of the schools, the cost goes up. And we're looking in a reason of about four grand, I'm not going to beg. I will try to beg it.
Right.
But we'll see how it works.
Yeah, maybe if we can't do it this year, that's something.
We could look at budgeting for next year and run it through.
Yeah.
Or even do some on a smaller scale this year.
Yeah.
And so that they can see what's going. It is a bit loose at the moment, so I only got the email this morning and I'm not had a chance to do anything with it. But we'll update on that and.
Brilliant.
Hopefully, we can get it going.
Good, that sounds good.
If I can just, I've been very, the Battle of the Bands, that idea was actually given to us by Six Events, who sold it to us. I just wanted to make sure my Heritage and Events Officer will be extremely disappointed with me for not doing that acknowledgement. That's come from Six Events, kind of sort of the seat to the council.
Okay, right, thank you. So we're happy to know that, yeah? All right, 16425. No, that's what we've just done, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, didn't take it.
I've got two, I know it as well.
We're 16525 now, the financial report for four months ending 31st of July. The game over to you.
I'll table the financial reports, this is the high-level summary. We divided this committee into three parts, we have the general Heritage and Events, we have the civic component of the Heritage and Events. And then we have the Carnegie Guildhall Charity, which we've just created on paper. And that's where we put all the commercial operations of running the Guildhall and the Carnegie into that. If you have a look at our March to date of our income side, we're up 2,420. Most of that is attributable to the bar revenue that we had at the VE 80 Day. So our general events is down, our Carnegie and Guildhall Charity are down. The rental income is down for the first part of the year and the bar income from the Carnegie Bar is down. We've taken steps and the management are able to address that. On the expenditure side, we are way over by 14,000 pounds. And on the pages that follow, I just give an explanation of some of those changes. You can see from the income, it's mainly the VE Day, 4,838 was the surplus from the bar. On the expenditure side, our salaries are down by 8,982 because we've got vacancies in the, in the Heritage and Events Team that haven't been filled. Our four-weekly salaries, which is item number four, are up because obviously if we don't have staff, we have to use sessional staff members. So they, they've, the total saving is just over 4,900 pounds. The Carnegie Guildhall repairs and maintenance, the Carnegie Guildhall is, is, I mean, every morning when I come to work and I see the town team manager, I do cry really because he says he has to raise another purchase order because something else has gone wrong. So we really are paying a pass for all the backlog maintenance that's taken place over many, many years. So that's there, some of that could be capital, it's the work we did on the Carnegie Kitchen, that 13,717 pounds is mainly the Carnegie Kitchen, the cladding. And you'll see in the explanation for that item, what's caused that. But that really is our highest risk, we can't manage it. And we've taken a management decision that if something goes wrong, we don't put a plaster on it, we actually fix it so that we don't pay a higher cost in future years. And the Guildhall electricity is, that's just a timing difference. We don't have smart meters, unfortunately, we'd like to have smart meters, but we just, we, our current electricity provider is Mercy. So we get huge bills and then we get huge credits on the next bill. And this is just, hopefully, just a timing difference because we've contracted our electricity for two years. Our contract runs out at the end of this month, but it shouldn't be that high. That's about 25% of our total annual electricity usage council-wide, and that's just not right. So I'm fairly certain we'll get a credit in the next month. But overall, there is a risk of income. We won't achieve our income and unbudgeted repairs and maintenance will pose us a risk going forward. But we're just trying to manage that to the best of our abilities. So my recommendations to note the financial report.
Okay, any comments or?
Just, I mean, obviously, we know that the repairs have to be done and it's like 13,000 pounds. And that's like 10,000 or 11,000 more than we was expecting. But the rest, although we spend a lot more in special staff, that's not even half of what we're saving in wages. So that's not as dire as it looks. And obviously electricity, as you say, we're at the mercy. So it's not really as poor as it looks, but what, where we do seem to be is income from events and stuff like that. So maybe we need to look at where we can raise a bit of revenue.
I think, sorry, if I can, I think one of the things that we have learned is that you can chase the top line, but you must go to chase the bottom line. So we've cut back, you know, we were staffing events for regular hires. We were actually paying sessional staff to come to be here because what the amount of money we received from the hire was barely covering that and certainly wasn't covering utilities. So that does have an impact on your income because if you lose that, but it certainly has a saving in terms of your expenditure because you're not employing staff to come in and basically total their thumbs for two hours. Because we have a hire in that's not paying a very high pay fee. So there's an element, you've got to look at the revenue and the expenditure together, you know, when that goes, when the income comes down, the expenditure goes up, which is what the situation we have with the repairs and maintenance, that's always the worrying factor for us.
I mean, once the repairs are done, obviously, we know we've got ongoing needs and that's all budgeted for in everything. So once that they're done, some of this will disappear from there because it will go into there. So even, and then it will look even, even less bad than it currently does. It doesn't look very healthy at the moment.
That's good.
Yeah, just a question on Carnegie roof really, because with that out of action, if you are, when reception is in there, then that does limit some what you can do. You can bring stuff in, but the easy space, and if you are trying to market it as a top holiday venue, to say that. So what is the plan, because obviously you alluded to the fact that there was a plan in place for the roof to be done. Is that depending upon funding being received or have we got a timeline of when we think that we might be able to act on?
We have, we've been doing a lot of work, we've got the structural side, certainly, we've got some of the, the roof hadn't been properly supported, so all the struts have been put back. The inside, though, we've still got water accumulation. So what we need to do is we actually need to put a sloping roof on it. We've getting contrary advice as to whether we need planning permission because it's linked to this building. So some of the planning people that we've been talking to say, because it's linked to this building, it then takes on the characteristics of this building, not the Carnegie. It's the 1960s, late 60s thing. And it's also the heritage area, conservation area, so we have to be conscious. So if we could just put a sloping roof on it, we resolve all our problems, we can fix it and it'll be good for the next few years. So we are just, we are just getting that confirmation. Working with contractors is extremely difficult, we have a project manager who's been working with us on quite a few of the projects. I get copied into the emails and I just feel frustration of just trying to get all, you know, all the stuff. We also come out the city season where people have either leave to understand it's summer holidays. So it is tough, but we are very conscious of it. If we could get it, if we get the approval signed off, it would be done within a week, you know, it's as quick as that.
That's the thing, yeah, the negative publicity thing we had with the scaffold being up on the Crotto Tower, something we want to try and avoid. And the last, his public opinion saying, well, Carnegie roof, it's still not done, that type of thing.
But we have to follow.
Yeah, I understand. Just useful for us to be informed for a member of public approach, yeah, rather than me saying, I don't know, at least you have a little bit more.
If I can just come, I mean, the one thing that we've done, for example, if you've come into Carnegie in the last few weeks, you've seen the big fridge in the reception area. So we, you know, someone needed to cater for a wedding, we provided that for them. So we're very flexible in terms of trying to accommodate and be very honest with our hires. The hires had no expectation, if they come and do a wedding tomorrow or this weekend, there's no expectation that they have a fully fitted kitchen. They're very appraised with the situation that it's out of balance.
I do agree, Gansel, right, that we do need to have a fully functioning, it's a professional kitchen then. And it's been a waste of resource of this council for years. If we can cater for our own events, I mean, getting it so catered in, that means A, we've been quiet with the price that we offer to the hires for it. Or B, we can make a larger profit margin. Which is, would be my initial fault of trying to claw back from what you've said. But it is key that we have to have that done. Once that's done, then we have to look at how we kick it out. Then we have to look at where we're going to get the staff to do it, whether they're on a sessional basis or not. Which, if you're looking at catering staff for that, the only model you can really viable uses is sessional staff. As long as you've got regular people that you can go to.
Yeah. That's true. Any other comments?
Can we have it done before the mass Christmas dinner?
If it doesn't have to be outside here, unfortunately, there's too many players involved. But noted.
Okay. Right, 16625, progress and actions from the previous meeting. You again, Alan.
You'll see, there's quite a few around the civic policy, the flag policy at the bottom there. The Remembrance Sunday events are all there, the calendar of future events is there. We've just got some longer standing items from the top, getting the support team for the civic events. You know, at the moment, if someone goes and leave, we're missing a sword bearer or something else that we still need to work on that. It has fallen off the radar a little bit, the very top item, but we just, you know, there is a lot of stuff in progress. And we will get this done. The bottom ones, certainly, since July 2035, all those will be done and we'll see action this, by the next meeting.
Okay.
Have we had any applications for sword bearer, lace bearer?
We have to re-advertise it again.
I know we've got sword bearer, haven't we?
If they're not on leave, unfortunately.
Well, if you get a lace bearer, if he's on leave, you can't do it, but obviously, if he's around, then we'll do it.
It's just to make sure that we have that, you know, the backup of it.
Yeah. What's got any thing there, isn't it? Lace bearer, okay. So we're not, we're doing quite well and we're getting a lot of them off the stewards.
Coming on the civic side, we've talked about lace bearer, so what is the situation now in terms of town crier? Because, obviously, we know Mike left and then we had a young lad come in and then he went. And then obviously, Mike's filled in on a couple of things, but he's not obviously dedicated to us. Are we pursuing trying to get somebody else to fill that role or are we just relying whether Mike's available to do things?
I think that's unfortunately been one of the things that have just fallen off the radar a little bit with all the staff of people that we've had this year. But I think it needs to be followed up again, and we will follow it up.
But I think it just adds to the occasions when you have events that have somebody to fill that role.
Yes.
I spoke with Mike and he refused to point back to. I I spoke with Mike, um and he he refuses to point back to. To come back to Thetford Town Council because of the way he was treated by the last clerk. Um and counsel apparently. Um. I have said, like, you know. I I'm going to invite him along to anything I do, not as a town crier, as 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 Mike, he was he was quite a good servant to this town. And I think he has indicated that he's quite willing to help with training, a town crier, but. Well, yeah, they won't find.
So we've got to find the town crier, but he's quite happy to help.
Um, he's available, he he has indicated that he might be, yeah.
Okay.
But it's, where do you find a town crier? They found it exactly out, one of them was a few at Weverspoons on Sunday.
Maybe not the ones we want, though. Okay. Right, um one six seven two five, approval of flag flying policy.
Sure, you must be seeing out of this agenda item because it's been, it's been coming and keeps coming up. Hopefully, this is the the final one. Uh councillor Peters did note that I've been using the wrong terminology, it's not the Union Jack, it's the Union Flag. So if you would note, if I can table this, that amendment will be made, uh if the council, if the committee are happy. But to to look at the policy excluding that incorrect uh description. But otherwise, I think we've gone through all the items, every, all the what the committees have, the this committee has agreed at the last three meetings. We've incorporated all those changes and I've just summarized really where they are. We put the revised flag policy in, you can see where the yellow is. These are all the changes that we've um that we've made. Um and. Um. I I think the only thing that. Um that I've added that this, that hasn't gone through the uh through the committee is. When if, is this paragraph here, if I don't move my cursor so quick. That's when a flag flying day falls in a weekend or bank holiday at a time clock will determine the the flag flying arrangements for for those occasions. Because there's a budget implication, we have to have staff in, uh uh et cetera. But if that's the only change I've made, otherwise this committee has. Uh approved all the other changes that 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 have been made and all the suggestions that have been made have been incorporated into the into the policy.
They get the one in quick before we get reform in and change it all again.
And we are not responsible for the flags that are on London Grounds.
I have pointed that out to some people and they said, is the couns, is that the council's doing? I'm just saying, no, we'd have put them the right way up. I thought it's slow.
Put them up.
Yeah.
It's a small group of people.
Yeah.
Because I videoed himself getting arrested at the police station. Definitely, right.
Right, are we happy to approve the changes and the?
Yeah.
To the flag flying policy. Uh oh, we need to propose a second of them. Pick to propose, Mike, second.
And then the last one that I've spoken about for a little while is just the Remembering Sunday. This is just a, an outline of the program to help councillors. Um um understand what the process is. We've done, uh councillor Vic Peters, councillor Mac McDonald have had working group meetings. I've attended the 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 last one, uh the paperwork, we're just going through from from the risk assessments and the road closures and the. And the special um um action group, uh the Bradford Council, uh we have to get authority from. Um all of those are there. There were some um points made and I, this is really just. Um the 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 process and the, you know, the the involvement of councillors on that particular day. Uh one of the changes that came out of the working group was this one at the parade end, where uh the deputy mayor will address all the units. When we convened at Riverside Walk, in fact, for their time. That's a new change. And then there's obviously some arrangements around the dice, I think.
Can I expand on it? The the reasoning for that is because like last year, we had it where the mayor actually. Was due to dismiss, but the man can't be in two places at once. And as happened last year, he got waylaid going down to the second one. So you've got the whole parade literally standing in Riverside Wall. Waiting to be dismissed. So it was felt that the deputy man, obviously the deputy mayor is in present, it will be a nominated. Uh councillor, um will then dismiss the role. Basically, thank you very much for coming, wonderful turnout this year. Um I I'll leave for the parade marshal to dismiss everybody. And and you do your thank yous and and all that. So that is, that is basically it. And we're not then waiting for the mayor who is taking the salute and and obviously then got to do, and and he can't, it's not fair. For the mayor to take the salute of the dice and then expecting to rush off when he's entertaining. People could be the Lord Lieutenant and 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 stuff like that, you know, it's 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 not a good picture. So it was just, it was debated when we say, well, maybe that's what the deputy mayors should do. Because that's what they're there for. They take the role when the mayor's not around and the man's not around there. So he dismisses the the people at the dice. Uh at the Riverside Walk.
Right, good.
Can also make in the the actual at the dice, because it is a very small dice, and it was felt that. Um it wasn't really appropriate for everybody to gather at the dice. So that's why we're all going to go straight down to the thing, because we haven't got the usual one. It's a lot smaller than what we've always had. And you're only going to get the three to four people on there. Um and it includes the um. Mayor's consult or mayor's mayoress, they would also not be going on the dice, they'll go with the rest.
More dice. Why is it a smaller dice this year?
It was, the dice was owned by someone that, and we know that we we can only get that dice. So the RF. Um training regiment basically supplied us with a with a dice.
Oh, no.
We we yet, basically, otherwise we're going to go buy one for one, yeah.
Yeah.
It seems silly.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
And is is there anything else on that? Because obviously. If you've got questions over it, I'll visit the working group, so I can maybe answer them.
Hmm, any, any questions or comments? I think it's really clear when it's written down like this with timing and.
It's what we set out to do last year.
Yeah.
See, when we had to change personnel, a lot of the staff that was in there last year never got transferred over. And they had to search for it and.
Right.
Um I've got to say, Kate has done a hell of a lot of work in in getting it up and running.
Yeah.
Um because, as I say, it it was sort of in the abyss of, um well, we've gone, we just leave it there.
Yeah.
Um and and she has worked tirelessly on that and it's. And it's now a a document that we can, we don't have to worry about. The only thing we have to worry about is turning up, because the civic officer does all the invites now. They've got a list of who to invite. Um and and what to do. The routine is there. All you've got to do is work out what songs you're going to have and. Um who's going to do the service, the civic officer does all that. So it makes it easier when we are no longer on the council. The next council and it's there, it's ready. And that's never going to be challenged.
Yeah.
You know, that we know now, we've fore, we've foreproofed past this for future councils. And I think that is a a good thing that we started last year. And councillor Donald, I've got to say, kind of nice, yeah, that work.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, I think that's that's really good and clear. That's well done to everyone that was involved in putting that together.
This is like a credit dollar, taking credit left, because I just put it from the report.
Okay, um. Six nine two five, um oh, it says about Dr Min, Alan Minns. Um it's to discuss what options are available to the council to commemorate commemorate him. Um I did a bit of research on him today, because I like doing that and wrote some things down about him. So he was born in nineteen, eighteen fifty eight, sorry, in um the Bahamas. Uh he came, his brother was a doctor here in Thetford. And that's why he came after he trained to be a doctor. He he trained in um the Bahamas and in this country. He was elected to, he's um elected to the council in nineteen O three. And served as mayor in nineteen O four and nineteen O five. So this year will be a hundred and twenty years since. The last time he was the mayor. Um. It um, he's the, he's the first mixed race um mayor in. It says, it, all I could find was in Britain, which I presume it means England, because I'm not sure that Scotland. Don't have mayors and I don't know about Ireland, but we can say Britain. Um so he's. He is mixed race because his grandfather, who was called John Minns, had gone out to the Bahamas and he'd married Josette. Who was a former African slave, so he was like a quarter of um. Uh descended from an African slave. He lived in Bridge House in Bridge Street.
Oh, Bridge House.
Yeah, that's the one that I always think is sideways on to the, on Bridge Street, isn't it?
Yes, um the last house before the grandma's family.
Yeah.
As you come into Bridge.
Yeah.
They they had a recruitment, I think, since she left for a while. Not sure if it's there now.
It's the one, it's the one that's sort of um across. I thought it was the one, you know, where you go across the bridge.
It's before a bridge.
No, well.
Bridge Houses.
Is that, what's the one that's sideways, where the um estate agents is? Isn't that Bridge House?
No, don't think so. Oh, it could be. Also, Bridge House was number twenty four.
I tried.
I I might be wrong.
I thought.
It's not happening since you've done around.
Sideways.
Pretty cases.
Yeah, and.
Indeed. I I had thought he was a singer at one point as well, and opposite the museum. Because he saved the busts from the fire at the theatre.
Someone did say you don't.
Yeah, because some of the address, on some of the census, it says Alexandra House, but I I couldn't find where that was. But I can, I can still keep looking, but um but definitely in the nineteen. Oh one, eleven and twenty one census, he's at Bridge House. Um so he was also the medical officer for the workhouse as well in. Um in Thetford. So I just think the last time we had a meeting, a lady came and suggested. That we should do something to commemorate him as, you know, the first mixed race mayor in the country. Um so I just thought we should have perhaps some ideas of what we could do. And where we could put something that would commemorate him, something that was meaningful. Um because we've got. Thomas Payne, we've got Boudica now, haven't we, in the Pocket Park? Um I know we've got Captain Mannering as well. You talk about historical figures.
Mike, um the the notes we received for which many thanks, as always, say to identify options for officers to further investigate. I think, I I would tell that if there's a list of things, and we may agree tonight, there's only one option. Uh but on the list, on, in in discussion, we really ought to look at going the whole hog and saying, we need a statue. Um the the reason is that uh what it represents is uh a personal success. And one that uh shows up well for Thetford, that he was seen as someone suitable to be our mayor. But also, um the reason for his significance is hugely important in the age in which we live. Um it's not that racism is a new thing, or racism is particularly bad now. Actually, what's happening now is very positive. Though there's a long way to go, we are now facing up to the need to get to a society in which everyone is seen as of equal value. Uh whether it be gender or sexual orientation or race, colour, nationality. Those things do not make people inferior or superior. And I think that's, that's the spirit of our age to face up to that problem. We by no means want it as a country or as a world yet, but but we are at least having a go at it. And I think this is our contribution in Thetford to saying, this is the side we're on. We're saying this man is important because of what he stands, what what he represents. And I really think that we should say, it's so important, it is absolutely the issue of our age. It's so important that I personally, I think only a statue would do. I I I appreciate the statues are stunningly expensive and we need to look, I think, at the issue. Where the money might come from, whether there are charities, whether there are local benefactors. Um others which might assist, whether we would get any response if we if we opened a fund to draw and raise funds as a contribution towards it. Maybe that's arguable either way. Uh but I do think that um Alan Glazier Minns represents what is good. In society, both at the time when he lived and now. And it's good that Thetford should be able to stick forward and say. This is what we believe in.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's, that's really good, but.
I agree wholeheartedly with you. We sat in a room with pictures commemorating Maharaj family and Maharaj Singh. Thetford is proud of that and history always has been. And as far as I'm concerned, in my life, so I hope it always is. Um I think our decisions are what we, what are we gonna do? I agree again. That's on the statue. It would be really silly for us to go, hey, look, we've got Maharaj Singh on Button Island. We've got Boudica in our Pocket Park. Uh Rukets Army on the film, Captain Mannering, um you know, we, and we have, well, it's an important part of our history. Let's put a plaque. It doesn't read well. So I agree, a statue. The question is then, where do we put it? I do think we need to look at options. The one that came up at the last meeting was um uh Nunnery Drive, where the the archway is, near where you live. Where the archway is, put Pocket Park there and put a statue there. But that's not the only offering in town. We're very successful now with Pocket Parks. You know, we've had that one, we had the little one at Danclos. Um and they are, the community is coming around to say, what great idea, what great things we we're doing. So I I honestly think that is the way forward. We form a pocket park, wherever it is, we form a pocket park. We have a statue, we have a plaque to a brief history of him. And and it's a nice peaceful place for people to sit and if they have lunch or or whatever. Um where it goes. I care not. As it goes. And I think we should work into that, I think.
Yeah, I I completely agree and I think we should prioritize it for the reasons that you both just said, particularly with what's happening at the moment politically. Um I think that it would be really good if it was somewhere where lots of people see it. I mean, I think where it, um place where Mike lives, seeing people coming in from Barry would see it, but um. You know, people from other parts of town maybe never see it. Um so, you know, it makes me wonder about somewhere a bit more central. Like near the river somewhere. But, yeah, I don't know how. How much we could say we're going to turn this bit of Riverside into Pocket Park or whatever, but I feel like, you know, all the other statues are also in a. Nice central location where there's a lot of footfall and it would be good, I think. Although I can see the links to to Vondas, whatever.
Yeah, well, that's what we spoke of last time. Uh and and but wherever we put it, we will put that in our Heritage Trail.
Hmm.
Trail, trail.
Trail.
Trail, it's not trial.
But sorry, but but back on that, see, I I I agree that there's a problem with the location, but it's kind of a nice thing to have. And I I think the idea of Nunnery Road is 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 excellent, but it's probably is it far out. Possibly looking at the kind of trail that we, you talked about, a trail that would be be carved on time. We've since done that with Boudica, but what about a Pocket Park at Nunn's Bridges? On the opposite side of the road to the Feepow Tree. So there's a little area there where there is already one memorial tree, one one memorial at a tree. But I wonder whether that would form an appropriate pocket park. So I'll just throw that one as a slightly more central, slightly more central. Um location. It's it's no bad thing, I think, to have not to crowd everything into a too small. It's it's no bad thing, I think, to have not to crowd everything into a too small an area. Um we want to encourage people um to 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 own, as it were, the whole the whole town centre and for visitors to say, this is part of our town centre experience.
Hmm.
But it does say on there that we we're going to get officers to like um look at potential places. And I think, you know, really, that's what we need to allow them to do. But the decision we make is what are we going to do? And do we say yes, do it as a part of a statue? Um and go find a place. So it would be that unless someone actually has a really brainstormed idea, because.
No, I think that's, I think the pocket part with the statue, I think it's important, like Mike said, that we have a statue, that like you said, we don't just put a plaque up somewhere, you know, it's it's too important. Um.
I don't know how it's been overlooked for this long, really.
Hmm.
I don't know how it's been overlooked for so long.
I know.
Now it's kind of seeming so obvious, why haven't we?
Why haven't we?
Yeah.
We got one already, yes, yeah.
So having written the information panel in there, pretty favourite story and the locations, and it's quite interesting that some of the social commentators are saying how is he perceived in his time and it seemed he's pretty much accepted as a professional person within the town and it wasn't the you know, one would expect nowadays, the the backlash. Um I'm very keen, if we do do a statue, to try and link it to somewhere that is related to him, rather than plonking somewhere that's gone on that. What we must be fearful of is if you put him somewhere out of the way, it will say, well, you just you put him, you say, our citizen, you've got to, you've got to shy away from that. So obviously Workhouse was somewhere where he works, the partners, they've still got the archway, then the the gateway there. But again, you've got that fearful point of this at the periphery, um albeit it would be seen from people going down, that's what you're saying. So the house opposite um the ancient house museum, I think there's potential there, because if you look at the layout of that car park, there's some green bits of area that aren't used as car parking, that could quite easily host it. Um and I just think, more and more I think about it, that lends itself to being within historic core.
But not pregnant.
It is, but there's no reason why we can't request it.
Hmm. That may become ours.
The Captain Mary statue, we went through the pain of getting a licence from Redman to put that there, so you get a licence to, once you get it in place, they're very reluctant to get rid of it, but if you get a licence to put it on that site. And I think it's quite nicely visible for visitors, the ancient house where the story is told. He saved the bust that were on the theatre right next to that. Um the other point was down by the town bridge, there's a bit of green there by the Graham School Wall, it's out a bit. Um but more and more I think about opposite the ancient house, Pocket Park there, because the reason um that'd been quite nice to do, and it's in in a new, putting it right in the town centre where visitors will go to the ancient house and will come from station down that road and see it, so. I think it's for.
And and the plus side of that as well is, um where people are working in town, they will use that to socialize their lunch and stuff like that, which is why Boudica's been such a success.
And I think that's like, he lived in St Peter's Parish, which is, that's near St Peter's Church and that, which you know, with everything that we want to do with that, I think we're encouraging people to come into that area as a heritage area and to have him that commemorated there would probably be good. I mean, I know he was, uh sorry, the um Workhouse is probably important, but he was also a town councillor and a mayor, so.
Yeah, obviously, this this building is associated with him, but we've got.
We can't, yeah, we've got.
You want to eat into too much space on the mark, basically want that functionality, don't you?
Yes, yeah, we don't want just another statue and it doesn't mean anything, do we? Yeah, yeah, sorry, Vian.
Just making sure, Sandy, you mean in the kind of car park area that's behind the, where like the hairdressers and stuff is?
Yes, but the entrance to the park widens out and there is a an area there, they've got some motorcycle parking and there's been there on the net. So you would see it as you walk down the road, I'm not saying put them to the back of there, because if you don't have a sign, you want it invisible.
Yeah. Yeah. I always walk through towns, I don't think I've ever really been into.
It does have a station pass there, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, we need to have a.
I wonder whether it'd be nice if, I don't know, like you could discourage the kind of get the car parking a bit more to one side, so he's not sort of, yeah, surrounded by cars or anything.
Well, I think my end of this year would be wide, you'd just have the access road bit there.
Yeah.
And then you've got an area there which I'm going as well, there's motorcycle parking or cycle park.
Yeah.
You do it like with that, and you create a grid space there and put the bike racks in. On the other side, there is a little well that they've had um panel there already, you can put a couple of bike racks in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, good change.
Yeah, so is that enough ideas to take that?
I'm sure we'll feedback some more for the next meeting, but we'll start this one and see.
Yeah.
We could end up listening to about thirty, because there is a lot of places around that you would would benefit from a pocket park.
Absolutely.
Um but we can only do one at a time.
Yeah. It it also makes it commemorate him, but also improves the area around Thetford, which is important as well. Yeah, so, okay. Right, one seventy twenty five exclusion of press and public.
I'm sorry, just, so I know we're not meant to do it, but can I just say that um the Angler's Bloom was such a wonderful thing and and it is an event that we've and I hope we can expand on it next year. Uh when when I was at the event, it was quite obvious that we only entered two of the categories. Um Sudbury entered just about everything and they won loads. But we potentially could have got more awards from that, so maybe because it is an event, I don't know what committee it would come under, but.
Committee in environmental services.
Right, well, I'm just saying, yeah, like we might be able to support something with um Alien Bloom for next year and and get it out as an event type thing to promote for the other committee.
If I can, I I think the intention is to bring it more to full council than to have it as a committee, because it's such a wide council
Yeah.
activity, so I think that's being discussed at the moment.
But sorry if I'm hijacking you.
No, no, you're fine. No, I think that's
But it was.
You know, this will contribute to Angler, uh to Thetford and Bloom, won't it? Brilliant. Um right, so yeah, I'll read this, consider resolving that public bodies admission to meetings at nineteen sixty, the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity will be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Um so the decision is, are we okay to exclude the press and public?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all of them.